Well, good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 27th, meeting at 5:30 of the Cumberland County Commissioners. I'll call the meeting to order.
So moved.
And, Mr. Manager, would you read the roll, please?
Commissioner Cludier.
Present.
Commissioner Wetonis.
Up here.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Commissioner Jamison. Commissioner Coward. Show Commissioner Coward and Commissioner Jamison absent.
Can we note for the record they're both excused, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Commissioner. Are we now, those who would like, join me in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting, the regular minutes of June 14th and a special minutes of June 28th?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, errors or omissions? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Permission, minutes are approved. Informational reports, and I believe we have people here from the University of Maine Cooperative Extension for budget presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this evening we're visited by Extension President Valerie Jones, Treasurer Teresa Kelly, and Extension Staff Member Sarah Connet. As the Commissioners are aware, last year, last fall, during budget season, we had a little bit of discussion around what state statute said in regards to funding the Extension Service here in Cumberland County. And it was, the Commissioners provided guidance to me to have a conversation with the Extension Service that it would probably be, or behoove us, to have an understanding of their budget prior to us jumping into the budget season. So Sarah and I have talked a number of times over the last six months, leading up to this date, and they are prepared to present their budget to the Commissioners so that it can be wrapped into the 2022 budget process that starts literally in about a week. So if it's all right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite either President Jones or Treasurer Kelly up to the mic to kick things off.
Thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to be here. There's been a lot of discussion, just in my short time on the Board, I've been on the Board about three years, about how we could better engage with the county and the Commissioners at large, so we're really happy for this opportunity. My name is Valerie Jones, I've been the President of the Extension Association for about a year, but my Extension relationship goes back much further. I've been a volunteer master food preserver for about four years, and I have kind of a deep love and passion for the Extension, given all that I know now as part of the Extension Association Board. Our partnership was, of course, formed in statute, but I do really hope that you get a chance to look through all the beautiful materials that Sarah's provided. It does show a lot of where the budget allocations for the many years that you funded the Extension have gone to help the citizens of county, as well as citizens beyond. There's a few pieces in the cover letter, I'm not sure if you were, received that in advance, but it's also included, about just how the Extension has been agile in response to the pandemic. Some of the things that I would highlight is that we did have Extension staff create the main farm and seafood producers directory, and that has been really helpful in times of food shortage, in trying to locate local foods, which we are really lucky to have a lot of here in Maine. And that has impacted not just our local producers in Cumberland County, which 72 were listed on that, but also helped all the citizens in locating those foods. In addition, so that's our agriculture portion, we also have a horticultural division, they saw a double, a double increase in how many requests they were getting for advice on home gardening and really managing pest control, fruits, all of those types of things. So really being able to answer those questions, even when the staff had to also go work from home, as many of us did in 2020. We also have a nutrition section, they also went online with many of their offerings, and both for the FNEP program, which specifically targets low-income citizens, with how to better stretch their budget, how to prepare healthy foods, but also with maybe my most connected part of the Extension, the Master Food Preservers Program. So the food preservers and our food professionals went online with classes on how to preserve foods, ensuring that the resurgence in food preparation was safe, and that everyone was getting good information on how to prepare those foods, and ensuring that they had a good valid resource to go back to. We also have 4H, which was, was different in the target audience, because it was really a lot towards youth. And I was most impressed to see a lot of the content that they created for families. Anyone with small children in their life, whether school age or below that, has come up with some sort of how do we help them through this time and give them an activity. 4H really came together with kits that they provided and trainings to help those students have, you know, educational materials that were supplemental, and were sometimes also used by their educational institutions. And that's not just for small children, we also had teenagers that moved to an educational model in, in teaching their peers on how to use those kits and those resources. So really a lot of value for what the Extension does. The relationship the Extension has to the county is pretty unique. The Extension is funded by federal, state, and county funds, so I think if you see on, I think it's probably page three for you, you can see kind of a breakdown of the budget at the top of it. So you can see that, you know, there's a fair amount of funding here from the University of Maine that's supporting Extension too. So really allowing those dollars to be met with other dollars at the federal level, so that the county is feeling the benefits of it, and not having to fully support all that And I don't know if, Teresa, you have anything to join to add?
I'm here to answer questions or help in any way.
Yeah.
And I want to add my word of passion about Extension as well. I'm a retired I D M R, so food and children and all those sorts of things are, are out of my life, but joining Extension has really brought me back into it. And I am a proud master gardener, and I participate in the hunger program, where we provide food from our gardens to the local food pantries. And all of this because of the guidance that I can get from the Extension Service. And I think back to the beginning of the pandemic, every portion of what that organization provides has had a beneficial support for everybody who was impacted by that pandemic, because of the skills that they provide, and they were able to balance going online as well as keeping things going in the office. And I highly encourage you, if you haven't been, you need to go see Tidewater Farm, it is gorgeous, they have demonstration gardens there, and they're going off about the food that they give away. So I must say, as a resident of Cumberland County, I embrace that as a workhorse.
Yes. And I would also say, I know, you know, there's specific focus here on budget, so that third page does have all the line items. You'll notice the largest budget item is actually staffing salaries, and I think that that is kind of unique, too. The staff really do help us get everything done, and those dollars are going to individual citizens of Cumberland County, they're going back into our local economy as well. So not only is there a benefit for every dollar spent on Extension, as far as the volunteer hours that we get, the expertise from the professionals and the staff, but also that we're supporting local individuals there as well.
And for every dollar that we spend in county, we're getting $10 from the university.
Yep.
This is really a wonderful arrangement. It's a good return on investment, I would think.
With that, I don't know if there were any outstanding questions, concerns, we can certainly try to field them here or get back with you later as well.
Are there any questions for the Commissioners?
I've got a couple.
Sure.
I noticed on this that your janitorial supplies is almost as much as your rent.
Yes.
And could you explain why?
Sure. So our janitorial services are just a portion.
Yeah.
The total is, I believe, $11,500. So that's split with the University of Maine in a portion. That has increased because of COVID, because they need to come in three times a week. That will hopefully decrease as we're able to start to go back to two cleanings. But that has been put out through the University of the bidding process, so that was the lowest bidder that we got.
So that includes services in addition to Clorox, huh?
That's cleaning the bathrooms, cleaning our kitchen, cleaning our, well, our teaching kitchen, I should say, cleaning office spaces, all that, as well as the floor cleaning that we do annually.
So my question is, I think the Commissioners, two years ago, or was it out last year, we were voted to fund $115,000, is it Jim, for the next two years?
Yes.
So you're submitting a budget of 126, so can, would the difference come out of the university's money? Because I see that they give you over a million a year.
Yes, so the university funding, if you actually, in your annual report, this is just a copy, you've already distributed in your email and in your mailbox. I believe we're going to come up numbers, one, two, three, four, page four or five in the back of it.
Excuse me, Sarah, if you could jump up to the mic so the millions who are watching at home can hear.
Of course. There's a pie chart on there.
Yep.
And that breaks down, the chart above it breaks down exactly what the university funding goes towards. So what you all are paying for as far as staff salaries is two full-time administrative staff and half of my salary as administrative staff. And then what the university is paying for as far as staff is, depending on where we are in the year, eight to nine other staff members who are faculty or professionals, so that is a higher wage that the university is paying. Yes, sure.
So where will you get the 11, what is it, 11,000, oh, difference?
I will be honest, I was not aware before we came to this meeting, I talked to Jim about a week and a half ago, and we were talking about how it was flat funded for two years. I don't think we were under that oppression originally when we came up with the budget. So we were submitting this, asking you all to, I believe, look at this and see if you could increase the number to 126.
What's your thoughts on, because we did offer to flat fund it for the next two years so we could see the budget, and then after that, go, so.
You know my attitude about it, don't you? I, I, I hope we'll, we'll take a second look at that.
This will be a discussion point in the budget, we have five months of budget ahead of us, so it doesn't need to be decided this evening.
Right, yeah, okay.
It was important for them to come in, share their, their successes and their budget with us this evening, but like I said in my intro, this will be wrapped up into the 2022 budget, and we'll have a lot of discussion on many different facets of that budget over the next five months.
And, you know, my idea has been for a while that we have kind of a special status under state law, and it's kind of a, supposed to be a joint, or a three-way undertaking between their board, us, and the, and the university, and so, you know, I, I think they're different than a lot of the other grants that we think about from year to year, so.
Happy to answer any more questions specifically about the budget, or Valerie and Teresa can answer any more questions about Extension's impact as well.
I do have a couple of questions about the master gardener and the master preserver programs, have those been active in the last year, given the pandemic, and how'd you do it?
They have, yeah. So for the master food preservers, there was actually a pairing up, so if folks were interested in actually having one-on-one guidance from master food preserver, then they could be connected to an individual, so a citizen would be connected to a master food preserver for guidance and support, and they would work that out amongst themselves, whether they felt comfortable outside distancing or web phone, that type of thing.
Okay.
Yes, so all of our programs continue to run virtually through the pandemic. FNEP did online, that's our food education for low-income families, they did online programming, 4H, we did online programming, I say we, because that's part of my job as well, is 4H, we did online programming, made kits, sent them out. Master gardeners did quite a few trainings online, and as well tried to get out in the community where they could safely, under university guidance. So we were continuing all program areas to function as normal as possible, through an online and kit-based program.
I have one other little question, just the logistics, how does it work that your gardening then becomes a food source for the pantries? What's the logistics of all of that?
So there's a couple different ways, so there's the, and Teresa, you might be able to speak even more to that, would you like to speak about the?
Sure. The actual.
Could you? Tidewater Farm, for example, grows a whole bunch of different kinds of vegetables, and the master gardeners, volunteers will come and glean those vegetables and bring them to the various pantries. We work with Wayside Pantry, as well as Good Shepherd Food Bank, and my favorite is the Midcoast Hunger Prevention Program in Brunswick as well. The individual master gardeners are able to keep track of the hours they spend collecting that food, and that goes towards their community service portions thereof.
They have, they have like an annual number of hours that they?
Oh, yes, sir. And you have to, one hour is worth 15 pounds of food, so if you have to grow at least 15 pounds to get your one hour of duty, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess, I have a, the question I have is, how do you envision handling the transition now from the COVID programs to, I guess, more open to the public and more?
Yeah, we are in the process right now, we are doing a hybrid model at this point, so we've got some that are still online, and there are some that are, some programs that are still in person. So in some ways that can add the workload, because you're still do, you're still have to do that online programming for those that aren't quite comfortable yet, and transitioning back to in-person. So I can speak to 4H specifically. Tomorrow, we have a Kids Can Can program in the morning, so it's a combination between our 4H program and our master food preservers, and so that's in-person, and then Thursday, we've got an online program that connects kids to teenagers around the world to learn more about their different countries. So we're kind of offering those, some online, some in-person, to meet the needs of who, where everyone's comfort level is, and that's across the board with all of our programs.
Will some of your online programs remain?
Yes, I, I think they will, because the reach has been pretty substantial for a lot of them, and it's allowed particularly for 4H with our global program that we're doing on Thursday morning, we can reach people a lot easier, they can be, last week someone was in Ghana, and so we could talk to them, and online worked well for that. But then there's those things like canning that you kind of want to do in person with kids.
Does anybody have any other further questions? Well, thank you very much, it was most informative, really appreciate you taking the time to come in and share the information with us.
Well, thank you.
And I do want to, we'll, we'll certainly remind you as well, but we are planning an annual meeting in September at Tidewater Farm, so it's at the bottom of the first page on the back page, as a safe statement. We would love to have a Commissioner in attendance if you'd like to join.
We used to go to that meal, we might, Jim?
I used to cook for that meeting.
Remember, there's a.
Nobody ate what I cooked.
There's a pie baking contest in there, too.
That's why with Jim when, he likes the blueberry pie.
There you go.
Well, yeah, next we have a number of staff reports that are listed here, there isn't any action required, it's just that they are available for anybody to take advantage of the information that exists in them. I don't believe anybody has any questions on that. Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, do, Mr. Manager, do we have any, do we have any comments from the public?
We don't, but if I could just touch upon two things before we jump into the public area, and I'm not seeing any public here, or we haven't received anything, but I want to bring to the attention of the Commissioners, two things, within the informational reports and presentations, and the bottom two, one is the remote meeting policy. The legislature, over the last three or four months, voted through 1 MRSA 403B, which allows municipalities, government agencies, to continue their remote meetings with restrictions and conditions. And one of those, one condition of this state statute allowance is for each elected body to have a policy on how they're going to conduct such a meeting. I'll be pretty frank and say that there's probably one or two policies floating around every municipality and county in the state of Maine, and we're all adopting and just sticking our name on it. So no one's reinventing the wheel, and these policies are all pretty much the same. So that's, many municipalities are going through a process of adopting these policies so that they have the flexibility to have a remote meeting, or have a hybrid meeting per their policy. So I just wanted to bring this, to introduce this this evening, allow you to take a look at it, it's my intentions, if I don't hear any concerns or comments over the next couple of weeks, we will be having a public hearing on August 23rd due to APA funds, and our need for Commissioners' approval on our plan that needs to be submitted by the end of August. We could do it at that meeting, or we could put this in front of you at your September meeting for adoption. But either way, I would recommend that we have a policy so that we do have the capabilities to enter into a video meeting format if the need arises. So enough on that.
May I have one comment?
Yes.
When you're putting this together, would you please take a look at the, at our charter and make sure it comports with what's in the charter?
So would this allow us to say, for instance, and I'll use myself, if I can't physically come to a meeting, would I be able to do it remotely?
You can, but there are restrictions, there are criteria that, the policy would not allow you just to say, "I feel tired, I don't feel like driving in this evening." That doesn't trip the criteria. The criteria would be if there is a, maybe a major accident on 302, and you, you would be significantly delayed coming into Portland, that would be a criteria, or there's a severe weather event in your area. But when we allow one Commission to be remote, we have to allow the public to be remote. So that's a, that's a tripping point. And so we're going to have to retrofit this room to allow, in a sense, Zoom to be able to be beamed up on that screen, and people who are logging on through Zoom can see you and hear you, and you can see them and hear them. So there's a few tweaks that we have to do to this room to get there.
And is that costly?
It will be a few thousand dollars.
So it'll have to be internet available in Costco in the future.
Take the string down.
Take the can off the pole.
The second item I'd like to bring to your attention is our need to have some dialogue around the, a committee around our APA funds. This committee would be responsible for review of applications that we receive, that we anticipate probably would start somewhere in the first of September, October area. And this committee would be a vetting committee and a allocation committee, but to make a recommendation for the county Commissioners. So it would be an ad hoc committee, per se, providing a, a recommendation to the Commissioners. So I had emailed out a couple of weeks ago, some quick thoughts around this, I wanted to get the Commissioners thinking about how you would like to approach this, if you would like to appoint two residents of your districts for this committee, is two too many, do you want to do one, do you want to do a hybrid? So I just wanted to bring this up this evening to have some dialogue, and give staff some direction on how you would like to proceed with establishing this committee. Questions?
Jim?
Well, I just have a couple of comments, I did get your note and appreciated it. I'll have to say, on, on, not so much actually here at the county, but certainly before when I was associated with the City Council in Portland, outside committees, volunteers were critical to getting good ideas, worked on, and put together, so I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good approach. And I think as long as everybody can identify people that they think have got things to add of substance in their districts, that's great, too, and I think a couple is fine. The other thing is, though, I would hope that part of, of what that committee does or would be responsible for understanding is the strategic plans that the county has developed over the last, well, in particular, let's say, four years, so that they're aware of not just the general APA rules that have, that come to us from the Congress, but, but also what elements of those rules that also dovetail with our strategic priorities might, might be opportunities, so that, you know, we, I, one of the great criticisms of all of that kind of planning work that we've done is that quite often it just becomes another opportunity to collect some dust, and I've never liked that, and, and I do think that a lot of what we've done over the last three or four years has been pretty constructive in terms of developing sound ideas. So I, I'm pretty positive about it, and I'm sure in every district there are. And I'm sure in every district there are talented people with, with great backgrounds and good knowledge that can help us a lot. So, I'm with it 100%.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have some thoughts on this, and I expressed them, I went to Jim. One of my thoughts is, and I understand, you know, with where I was coming from, but like with the rest of our committees, I think that there should be a commissioner is on the oversight of it, where, with no voting or power or anything. Because I'm just really concerned, and after I were listening to all the public, you know, on those calls and stuff, there's not a lot of interest with the public, you know? I found that to be, because there might have been three or four, you know, like on the calls and stuff, but, you know, a lot of them didn't pretend to the rural areas. And I'm really concerned that we need to make sure that the monies go out in the rural our communities, and I will feel that if there's not an oversight of somebody with that knowledge of what's out there, where that it could get over, you know, where that it could be overseen or something. So, that I would like to be on there is only as a listener, not of a voting body, and, you know, but that's what totally up to. Because we're on, you know, like all the other committees, and we have no rights to vote.
I assume these are all going to be public meetings, too?
There would be, there would be no prohibition of you showing up at the meeting.
Right, okay.
Much like a finance committee, you show up at the finance committee.
Yeah, okay. So, are they going to be a virtual, or are they going to be an in-house committee?
That's a good question.
Because if we can appoint two people, so there's, there's what 10 people, this room isn't going to hold with 10 people and staff. You know what I'm saying? And keep within the guideline. So I'm really not sure how that would work.
We will talk about that, but, you know, being the geographic region of our county, it may be best that we do it by video.
Right, yeah, that's true, yeah.
We may find ourselves back there relatively soon, anyway.
I'd say, yeah.
Well, a couple of questions I have for, first, I think it's a good idea, but the question that I, immediate question that I get back is, what's the time coming? And, you know, that's pretty hard to answer, because when you start talking about vetting applications, how many applications are we talking about? I mean, are we talking about somebody committing 40 hours a month? Or are we committing, or just, that, so, that, to me, is an important question to, to have resolved. The other thing is, that I've asked, and Jim used the word restrictions, the question I've had is criteria. Under what criteria, so the box that they're going to make decisions in, what, what is that? And then I assume that out of this all comes recommendations, not, not hard, fast decisions.
Sure. I can, I can probably fill in on a few of those. In terms of the criteria, first and foremost will be, the criteria of the ARP Act itself is what's going to be governing a lot of this, because certainly there's.
Excuse me, the what?
The criteria of the, the act itself would be first and foremost, because we've seen lots of interest in lots of projects that don't fall within the guidelines. So first and foremost, that's going to have to be first up. We've also been looking at some software that would help manage that, and enable people to be able to put in their input in a more streamlined fashion. So, you know, there may very well be a lot of people putting in for this, but I don't particularly, and I may be getting out over my skis here, regard this as some enormous time commitment. It's a moderate time commitment for a short period where those decisions get made as to what the recommendations would be, and then there's a little bit of a step back to let the county run the actual management of spending these funds, which is, in many ways, where a lot of the real lifting is going to be.
To, to one of your responses is, I assume then that there's going to be some preliminary screening of the applications to make sure that they fit within the criteria that we can perform? Then that's what will go to the, to this committee if it's formed?
Yes.
Okay. And certainly, one of the things that we're always looking at there a little bit is, how closely does any project tie into the core criteria of the APOA funding? Because there, there are a lot of, the term I often use is, how close to the bullseye is this project? Is this one that's something that they practically said out loud, do exactly this? Or is it something where you have to think about it a little bit? And so that'll always come into play.
Jim?
I'll say so far, I was on a call, and, you know, it seemed like there was a lot of interest in money from, for programs that had great merit but had never been funded. But it was, you know, my, my, my memory of the APOA requirements is always sharpened by the fact that there's a clawback provision in the law, that after the fact, results in some federal genius telling us that we, we spent the money wrong, and now we're going to have to write them a check. So, you know, I think that there is a built-in discipline there for, for us not to get too far out over our skis, and, and that was kind of, so again, I, I thought of several things that are in our strategic plan that, that are explicitly allowed under the program, and, and it always makes sense to me, after you do the planning, to go ahead and do the implementation, so.
The, the, one thing that I'm, I was going to say fearful, but one of, one of the things that I'm really concerned about is creating an ongoing program. And I, I don't know, how, how does that get ferreted out of the process, or does it, or whatever? But that's, that's certainly a concern of my part.
And it could easily be built into the questionnaires and the software that helps with that decision-making very easily.
Well, we could take even a step forward for that and put it as a criteria point within an application, that we're not going to fund anything that has a shelf life longer than three or four years.
So I guess what I'm gathering from kind of our conversations as commissioners, is that we would support doing this.
And staff is ready to help if, if a commissioner needs to have some capacity in, in finding some names within their districts. I, I can reach out to area town managers and ask them for individuals within their communities. My personal opinion is that we look for the resident who is not an elected person, or someone who is non-elected, as we already have a board that has elected members on it, being the finance committee and being the municipal oversight committee, is a combination of elected and municipal officials. So, I think we should look at residents with no affiliation to an elected body for our committee, and be more than happy to help out with that. And there's some, there's some great individuals out there that might have been past councillors or select board members, that would be terrific committee members, they're just not currently sitting as an elected member.
Could you send those out if you have some, you know, like, well, from my district?
Sure.
Yeah.
From any of them.
Yeah, well, from any of them. I mean, if you have some names, and then we can think it over.
I assume I can't just nominate Alex and Dawn.
Well, no, because neither one of them are in your district.
One's not even in the county.
Yeah, right, yeah.
They didn't read the exception rule, did they?
We haven't written those rules yet.
Thank you. Well, staff will proceed with a board of 10, and we will get some correspondence out to the commissioners on possible names for appointment, in addition to names that you guys stick up. Thank you.
Again, I'll go to comments from the public, if we haven't heard of any. Moving to the consent agenda, and Friday, asking for a motion on this, a number of these are, well, first off, to the public. The consent agenda is, is a agenda that the commissioners have an understanding of what these projects are, or what the contracts are, and have either debated or understand that they're an ongoing yearly issue. And as a result, they, there is no controversy, so they'll generally pass it. If a commissioner were to question something, they can, all they have to do is ask to pull it off this agenda, and it goes under new business where it can be debated. So with that, I will move passage of the consent agenda, items 21047 through 21055.
And I'd like to pull off, 21 is 054, and just have a discussion on the second patrol for Harrison.
Okay. So, other than 21054, is there, there's no further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it passes. So, 21054 moves down under new business, and.
So I'll move passage of 21054?
No, I'll second that, so Sue can. Discussion?
Yeah, with discussion. My, my thoughts or concerns are that this position will not be filled until we have enough with deputies to fill it, so it doesn't make it that we take somebody off the road now and just put them right into that. Has that been what conveyed, or is that how this is going to go? Kevin, do you want to answer that, or some? My concern is that this position for our Harrison, that is not going to be, you know, an automatic thing with that, we're not going to, you know, just stick somebody up there now, or does the town, does the town know the situation with that we're in, and we will fill this when the time comes, or how are we doing this?
So, the answer is, I can't fill it tomorrow. And the patrol captain has made it very clear to Harrison that we can't fill it tomorrow.
Okay, yeah.
This kind of crept up on us a little bit, because a couple of years ago, we weren't sure if we were going to have a contract up there or not, so, and, and we'd heard about the second, and, and we provided them with budgets for the second. So, currently, they're not going to get somebody. In the past, I have, if it's gone on a long time, made sure that they get somebody up there, and, you know, the reality is, if you pay for the premium service, cable TV, HBO, then you get the HBO, and, and we find a way to cover the basic cable, otherwise known as general revenue. That's not on the table right now. I'm going to be meeting with a couple of new town managers and Tim on Tuesday, to kind of see what he's thinking, and let him know that, right now, we don't have anyone to fill that.
Okay. Are you talking three months, six months, or?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that's fine.
No, you know, the trouble, the trouble we're in now is, we've just hired two people that are blueprints.
Yes.
And we haven't had to send them to the academy. That's pretty easy. We've had a couple of retirements. So, we hire two, we lose two, net gain zero, and then we add this one on there. So, right now, we don't have anyone in the hopper at all for law enforcement, and we've got about three positions we're trying to fill. There's rumor there might be a blueprint out there that's kicking the tires, and that obviously cuts it down. If we hire somebody tomorrow and they have not law enforcement certified, really, it's about a year before we, we put them on the road. So, that's why I want to have a conversation with Tim, to kind of lay out the expectations. We've always tried to tell people with a contract that sometimes, it's not like flipping a switch, you know? You vote on it July 1st, it starts, you know? Love to be in that situation, but we're not there. So, really, he's going to kind of hinge on my meeting with Tim Pellerin on Tuesday, to kind of see what he's thinking. Obviously, we won't be taking their money if we're not filling it. And again, I mean, it's, I gotta just find out what their intent is, and, you know, so I, I'm not going to fill it immediately. I can't say I wouldn't fill it with somebody off general revenue and then backfill that, but right now, I got a lot of problem solving to do.
And I'll jump in on that, that something that's sort of become the new normal is with finance, working with whatever community, if we are short a person at the start of a contract, working out a prorated amount until they get to the full staff, and that's certainly happened a lot more the past few years than ever before due to the circumstances, and it's just a conversation with the town.
No, that was just my concern. I, I don't have an issue, that I was surprised that they did do a second deputy. I mean, I was, well, I heard, well, the night afterwards, you know, that they were passed it with flying colors, so it's like, so, you know, it kind of gives me the impression, maybe a couple more years down the road, there could be a third, you know? Our Harrison could turn into another, our standardish kind of, you know, thing, have four or five our deputies, you know, just for Harrison, so.
Well, we explained the logistics. I mean, let's, let's think, you know, even if I put somebody out there, I don't have a car for them to go in.
Right.
You know, you can't do that overnight, especially now with, you know, being able to acquire cars and stuff like that. So that's going to take some time.
Yeah.
You know, hiring the person's going to take some time.
Yeah.
Hiring the person and maybe training them's going to take some time. So, we kind of let Harrison know this, and they asked for pricing, which, everybody asks for pricing, so I mean, you, you put it out there, and you try to explain that it's not like flipping a switch. I was surprised, too, because, you know, other than phone conversations between the town manager and the patrol captain, you know, and I had heard it was coming, but then all of a sudden it arrived.
Yeah, yeah, I was surprised, too.
Not uncommon, not uncommon. We've been through this before, and I'll use Gray for an example. When Gray hired their person on, it took us a while, and I think it was probably over a year before we were able to fill it.
Yeah.
So, and we're, we're not as bad as corrections on attracting applicants, but it's, that, that pool is drying up as well.
Right.
Is there any other discussion?
No.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that passes. 21056, could I have a motion to approve a policy for breach of personnel, of personally identifiable information under federal grant programs?
Why don't we? Was Jim going to talk about this?
Well, can I have a second?
Oh, oh, a second, oh, okay, oh, second, yeah, sure.
Jim?
Thank you. This policy, and I won't get too deep into it, but it is a requirement of our federal grant, particularly the Department of Justice, through Fay Lupe's oversight of her grants, that we have a personally identifiable information policy if we have a breach. What does that mean? That means a, we have a policy that outlines certain steps that the county needs to take in response of a breach, and we take these steps to notify the individuals that are impacted and federal agencies. The policy will govern breaches by county personnel that may result in unauthorized access, internal or external to the county, whether involving electronic systems or paper documents. So I think, in a nutshell, that's, that's the 30,000-foot explanation of this policy. It is something that the feds are requiring of us, and Fay Lupe has created a nice memo in your packet, and we have included the policy for your review and approval this evening. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Does I make a motion to?
No, no, it's already moved.
Oh.
Those in favor?
Oh, aye.
Passes.
Sorry about that.
No, it's all right.
Sorry about that.
No, it's all right.
There's only three of us here.
I know, it's a little rough. 21-057, a motion to amend, amendment to the non-union personnel policy, section 17.3, alcohol and controlled substances. Can I have a motion?
Move, passes?
I'll second.
I do have a question.
Discussion.
I have a question. I saw the catalog of tests that can be conducted and results transmitted to the feds, and the one that kinda jumped off the page for me was marijuana, which is allegedly legal in Maine. The feds don't agree, but the state does. And that, the idea of somebody driving a truck while they're intoxicated by marijuana is not anything that I'm going to try to advocate for, but I'm aware that those tests, several days after an intoxication event, still test positive, and I'm wondering if anybody here knows whether that's a level that would require a federal report.
Does anybody have a answer to...
Kevin, can spin.
Yeah, I can.
Kevin, can you move that podium over so we can see you?
So, from my prior life, as a drug recognition expert, I can tell you that marijuana metabolizes extremely slowly, and you're correct. My biggest fear, and I was asked this the other day recently, yeah, the other day, was, what if one of your employees who uses marijuana goes out legally, much like alcohol now, and then they come back to work? And my concern is this, it takes up to 30 days to metabolize, so it can be in your system for up to 30 days. Obviously, you gotta have impairment, you know, and then, 'cause the presence of cannabinoids are, then backs that up. My concern is, let's say it's one of the bus drivers, they go out and use marijuana legally in the state of Maine. It is illegal in federal, so I kinda hide behind, you can't violate federal laws, but we know that the wave is common. Let's say that person gets in a crash, you know, there's gonna be mandated testing, and so, there's no impairment, but there's a, there's a test, that comes out, and then the county gets sued. The presence of cannabinoids in that person's system is gonna, in my opinion, come up on the plaintiff's side to basically go, hey, you know, I know they weren't legally impaired, but, but for the use of this marijuana that's in their system, that may be the fight. So that, that really kinda concerns me, is not necessarily from a criminal case, that could happen, but more of a civil litigation down the road, if somebody gets a hold of a test, and the person didn't use it for like three days, but yet they have a strong presence of that cannabinoids in the system. So, that's my unofficial scientific concern.
So do you happen to know whether this policy would require, if somebody actually is tested three days out from having used, it could be medical marijuana, it could be adult use, whatever it is, does that trigger a requirement for a federal report? Don, do you know?
Want me to answer that, Kevin?
You can.
Yeah. What I do know is that, is when they're in the random pool, our transport deputies, this is really the group that falls onto this policy for the county. We are in a random pool, a consortium, with a bunch of other local, smaller motor carriers or employers, and there's what's called a random, random drawing, random draw, random selection, and every quarter, we could have one, two, or three. This quarter, we had four transport deputies who were randomly selected for drug and/or alcohol testing, and they don't know it. When they come here, they're, they're sent right over to our occupational health provider, and it, like, like Kevin said, the sheriff, if it's in their system, it can be in their system for up to 30 days, and if they have ingested or smoked marijuana three or four days ago, it could pop a positive test, which would trigger reporting to this new clearinghouse. And it also would trigger a positive test and could result in some counseling and potential rehabilitation before they could be released to drive again.
So, the, for alcohol consumption, there's a .04 tolerance of blood alcohol?
Yes.
That would be the Morning Bloody Mary, I suppose.
Yeah.
But, the, I, I'm not really familiar with any threshold for THC or cannabis or whatever it is that they find, and the, the levels aren't, there's no level that anybody knows about, all right? It's just yes or no?
I will say, pre-2009, when I gave up my DRE certification, it was 33 nanograms or more of cannabinoids, was considered the .08 that we look at for alcohol. My understanding is that's up for debate now, I'm just talking about what I knew as prior to 2009. You know, I'd say with the alcohol, the alcohol metabolizes a lot quicker. I mean, you know, you can have a drink, and depending on that, and a bunch of other factors, you could be okay eight hours later.
So, this is required by federal law anyway, right?
Yeah.
So, we don't get to rewrite it?
Right now, it's easy, because it is required by federal law, and it's a federal violation.
Yeah.
It, it's gonna get complicated if they, they do away with a federal violation, in my opinion, so...
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Manager, do you have anything else you want to submit on this?
I don't, I'm good, thank you.
Seeing no more discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I still don't totally understand the whole thing, so, I'm gonna vote no, because I still don't understand what the amendment...
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't really have a choice.
No.
Oh, we don't have a choice?
No. This is language that the feds are telling us we have to put in our policies.
Oh, okay, okay. Yes, I support it. Okay, gotcha.
'Cause I never do anything crazy.
Wanna scratch that last part? All right, moving along. For the public, we're going to go into an executive session.
No, wait a minute, we gotta do these.
What?
Disappointing.
Oh, sorry.
Wait, you got the old one?
No.
Oh, you crossed it out.
I crossed it off because...
Just because?
No.
Do you want to postpone it to a later date?
Yeah.
Well, I guess the situation is, you only have an individual.
Sure hope he has a pencil.
And, okay, explain to me, nobody came to nominate him, but by him showing up, you know, is that an automatic nomination by himself? Or should somebody should have been here to nominate him? Or how does that...
He could nominate himself.
Oh, well, he didn't.
He might have, you know, he didn't have to talk to anybody when he did it.
I think the individual showed interest.
Right, he showed interest.
The question for the commission is, is there the ability to run a committee of one?
Oh.
And maybe it's a dialogue with the greater group, and we're, we're proposing, staff's proposing an August 9th workshop, and maybe that's a conversation we have, along with staff's presentation of the opera funding.
It does, it does put us in a funny position, because clearly, the charter expects that we're gonna have a committee that's gonna toil away, and we, as far as I know, we've never had one.
For the last, what, two years, it's been one person.
And before that, it was only two.
Maybe three.
Well, maybe three. It was three at one time.
Maybe three. It was three, two, and two, yeah.
Supposed to be five, right?
No, right, yeah. A minimum of five. So, that I would suggest that we postpone the decision on 21-058 until the August 9th workshop.
So, we'll table this item until the August 29th workshop.
Is there a reason not to appoint the fellow that came, though?
Well, but...
I mean, he actually is the one who gets to appoint himself. It's a caucus, it's not, it's not for the commissioners to appoint, it's for the caucus to appoint.
I'll do whatever the commissioners want, I...
I think he successfully appointed himself, is what I'm saying.
Okay. So we have a finance committee of one?
At the moment.
At the moment.
Lee Pratt.
Yeah.
Out of Boreham.
I guess I, I still would like to have a further discussion of this at the workshop. We'll, we'll take care of it then.
Okay, man?
We're gonna have a discussion at the August 9th workshop, and then, we're gonna have to have a public hearing on the opera plan that needs to be submitted by the end of August, and we're proposing the 23rd, which would be our normal second meeting of the month. And so, we could have the appointment of committee, finance committee on that meeting. So if you wanted to postpone this item to the August 23rd meeting, allowing for a workshop to happen in between.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. I thought we were gonna flip the, the meeting and the, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, the, the first meeting of August would be a workshop.
Okay, all right.
The second meeting of August would be a public hearing, because staff needs the time to finalize the plan.
Well, and who knows, it'll come in from Treasury.
So, is there, was there a motion, a vote on that one?
There's a table, table the next meeting.
Okay.
Or do we need a vote to table?
I think so, yes.
Move to table.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Executive session, now we'll get to this. And for the public, what we'll do is, we'll be going offline, because this is a, to discuss a, two memorandums of understanding relating to Teamsters Local 340 Correction Supervisors Unit and the NCEU Local 110 Union Contract pursuant to MRSA 4056D. The county commissioners may go into an executive session for the opportunity to discuss contract negotiations. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
An executive session.
Making sure we're...
Yep. One thing I will...
Yeah, underneath the, turn around that way. I realize it's better than...
How did you know that?
Yeah.
I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're out. We have two items to make a motion on. Item 21-059, I need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the county commissioners and Teamsters Local 340 Correction Supervisors Unit.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 21-060, approve the memo, I need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the county commissioners and NCEU Local 110.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Comments from the county manager?
One comment, and that is, an update for the commissioners on the opera funds. Staff has met recently. We have, like I previously mentioned, pinpointed August 9th and August 23rd, the 9th for a workshop, the 23rd for a public hearing. Those are two check-in points for staff to present our planning process, as the commissioners are aware. We need to develop a plan on how we're going to move forward with our opera funds, and how we're gonna spend them. That plan is due August 31st. We are mapping out a strategy of reaching out to different groups, like the United Way, like the Southern Maine Agency on Aging, Case Managers Group, to try to spread the word about our public process, and encourage them to visit our website and fill out the online portal, seeking comments from interested parties on how to spend our funds. And we will work through that over the next couple of weeks, and collect as much information as possible, but I think, as the commissioners have been on a number of video calls with different groups for public hearings, I think it's a pretty clear indication that we're starting to see some themes, or general topic headings form, from one meeting to the next, and so that gives staff a good lead in developing this plan, in hopes of checking in on the 9th with the commissioners. And from the 9th, we'll move and refine our plan even more, so that you can adopt our plan the 23rd in a public hearing. That will allow us to get that off to the Treasury, and in accordance with the requirements. So, that is our process moving forward. We have a number of different initiatives as of opera, and one of the biggest initiatives is that we have, the applications closed last week on our compliance and auditing manager that will be paid for through opera funds for the next three years, it's a temporary position. And that, we are interviewing this Thursday afternoon and Friday. Catherine, Travis, Alex, and Kristen are the interview committee, and they will be interviewing two individuals on Thursday afternoon and two individuals on Friday morning, in hopes of having a name brought to me either Friday afternoon, if not Monday or Tuesday of the following week. It's important, it's a priority for us to get this person on board, because as much as there are gonna be compliance and auditing, which sounds like more of a backend form, the job description really puts them in the driver's seat to lead this program moving forward, as existing staff would add to the capacity of the individual, but this individual's gonna be the leading force behind doing a lot of the compliance work, in accordance with what the federal Treasury is requiring of us, being over 250,000 people. So, lots going on with opera, but we're hoping to kinda push away the smoke a little bit and get finer details as we move through August, and we will check in with the commissioners twice, so, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Alex?
Yes, I'll sort of tack on to what Jim just said, too, just as a general theme that I've been seeing, sort of from the finance side. Things like the additional policies that you folks saw this month, this compliance manager, and just a general theme that I'm seeing, really at all levels, local, state, and in particular federal, the word of the day, or the word of the year is compliance, compliance, compliance. There is just a lot of additional focus on regulations, on making sure that these federal dollars are getting spent correctly, this is trickling down to the state level. So I think that the fact that we are really getting aggressive about getting our policies in place, getting our people for the enforcement of those policies, and internally, really making sure we got our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, is us going in the right direction and in the necessary direction. It just really feels like that's going to be a super important thing the next few years.
Any questions of Alex?
No.
Along that line, and since you're putting together such a program on compliance, any thought about trying to get that to... thought about trying to get that to the, to the smaller communities? And the reason why I say that is that if we're going to get together with them on joint projects and they don't know how to run it right, it could come back and kick on us.
Well, absolutely. That's part of one of the things, if there's anything where we're passing money through to municipalities, we are every bit on the hook as much as they are in terms of the compliance needs. That's a critical role of that compliance person. And in fact, in many ways, the hardest part of the compliance isn't money that we're spending internally, because that's just one jump. It's when we're passing money on to another entity and then have to monitor that entity just like they were us, as if they were one and the same as us. And yes, municipalities are also starting to catch wind of the level of compliance testing that they're going to need, and possibly getting a little concerned about that as well, yes.
Alex, Travis, thank you.
Separate subject. You may remember, in late winter, you all approved the county entering into a contract with Sea Oak Consulting to establish a net metering solar program. That solar farm completed construction on Friday. They expect it to go live by the middle of August, at which point we'll start saving money immediately. Reminder, an estimated more than $100,000 a year. So I've been talking with Sea Oak about securing a kiosk in the county building that represents the amount of renewable energy that we're contributing to and the amount of funds the county is saving. It's a great tool for kids and for visitors to see. We'll probably try and have an event unveiling that kiosk and starting our, our project with Sea Oak, probably the August 23rd commissioners' meeting, I would think.
Any questions of Alex?
Alex, Travis. Sorry.
The highest compliment.
Good catch.
Don?
I have nothing further to add this evening.
I don't understand why. County Commissioners, Jim?
For people who are fascinated with how we're doing in the fight against COVID-19, one of your best sources of daily, actually, information is the New York Times, where they keep complete track of everything each day. And I occasionally look at that, and about a week and a half ago, they had these little circles of various counties across the United States, and far to the right was all of the counties that had the best performance, and far to the left was pictorals of counties mostly in the southeastern United States. Far to the right, and apparently by, you couldn't tell for sure, but it sure looked that way, far to the right, the farthest to the right appeared to be Cumberland County, Maine. So for a day, it looked like we had the best record in the, as a county in the United States. So I revisited that question later, last week, and they didn't have their little circles showing counties on this particular day, but it was pretty plain that in New England, still then, Cumberland County had the best vaccination rate in New England of any county. So I think we can be, give ourselves a little pat on the back. We may be having, revisiting some procedures that we thought we'd left in the rearview mirror pretty shortly with, with the latest outbreak of a variant, but it would also be very wise and very smart if the last 10 or 20% of the people who haven't quite gotten around to it in Maine and in Cumberland County got another little nudge that we're going to be a lot better off if they, if they manage to not, not get sick. And there's a one, there's only one good way to do that.
Very well put, very well put. Thank you. So...
No, I'm all set. I don't have anything this long.
Well, other than echoing what Jim said, neither do I. So with that said, the county, the county is going to go back into a, this is for the public, in, back into an executive session, out of which we will be not taking any action. So at this time, I suggest, other than to adjourn, I suggest that you may want to sign off, and we can stop our, our video. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
We're in.
Can we take five?
Uh, yeah.
Two or something?
Take a five-minute break.